Item number one, for item number one, we will welcome Pastor Chad Hatfield from Tucker Memorial Baptist to lead the invocation and Councilman Pat Jones will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, you may choose to rise and silence your cell phones.
Let's pray. Hallelujah. Father, I just thank you for this opportunity for all of us to be gathered together. And though complex times, we still desire for leadership and business to go, to be effective for the citizens of this city, I ask blessing upon all that are here, anointing upon this meeting, and grace to be given in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Miller, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Bowen.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Mount.
Here.
Ms. Rumball.
Here.
Mr. Shockley.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Ms. Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we do have a quorum. Item three is the synopsis of the last meeting.
Madam Chair, move for the adoption.
All right, that is a motion by Councilman Shockley and a second by Councilman Bailey. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? The synopsis is approved. For item four, we'll welcome the mayor for his report. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Madam Chair members. Last week, the signature events to help celebrate the six cities' one-hundredth, one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary were announced. Our sesquicentennial activities will be kicked off with the Good Time Show hosted by Michael Valentine will take place on February twenty-seventh. This day is important because it's the date that the West Virginia Legislature adopted the Articles of Incorporation for Huntington in eighteen seventy-one. This will be a virtual event. It was, it will be a virtual event that will show very, variety shows that will feature musicians, comedy, local celebrities, and familiar faces. More on, more information on this will be forthcoming. Then on, on April sixteenth, Mountain Stages Concert to Celebrate Our Anniversary will take place at the Joan C. Edwards Stadium at seven-thirty PM, again on April sixteenth. This concert is being presented by the Martial Artist Series, and tickets went on sale today and are priced at sixty dollars. All tickets are general admission, and this is a rain or shine event. The performance lineup will be announced at a later date, and tickets can be purchased on the Martial Artist Series website. And finally, we will be closing a time capsule here at City Hall on October twenty-second. This date is important because it's Colas P. Huntington's two-hundredth birthday. The time capsule will remain on display at City Hall, and later in the day, the Huntington Museum of Art will also unveil its Huntington-themed exhibit. Paving requests. Pay attention. I'm requesting that each of you council members submit spring paving requests for each of your respective districts to the city clerk's office by no later than the close of business on February, Friday, February twelfth. Mark Bates will go out into the field with each of you to assist in putting your lists together. We have some streets that were scheduled for paving this past fall, and the weather changed, and we weren't able to finish. We expect that we'll be spending well over a million dollars in paving on your, on your list for this, this spring. Reason that we have the amount, the larger amount of money to be able to spend in the springtime for your list is that we had a settlement with West Virginia Paving, with the state of West Virginia and other cities around the state, and we collected over six-hundred-thousand dollars in that settlement, and all of that is going to paving in your, in your neighborhoods. We had approximately forty city employees volunteer at our inaugural Day of Service on Wednesday, January twentieth, at the Facing Hunger Food Bank. Each employee worked a two-hour shift assembling food boxes for seniors, and we're proud to say that we assembled eight-hundred-and-fifty boxes of food, each of which provides enough food for one month. I'd like to thank council members, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilman Jackson, and Councilman Jones for volunteering with our employees. This event was so successful that we're working with the food bank to make this a quarterly, quarterly volunteer activity. We will provide, provide dates in the near future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number five is a first reading of an ordinance twenty-twenty-oh-four-six. Ms. Miller?
An ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the Huntington Police Department with the Village of Barbersville Police Department.
Chief Cornwell?
Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of council. Twenty-twenty-dash-oh-dash-four-six is an ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter an intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the Huntington Police Department with the Village of Barbersville Police Department. This is an update to an existing MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding, with the Village of Barbersville for the officer that they provide to work with our Drug and Violent Crime Task Force. What we're doing here with the MOU is we're adding a section to dictate how asset forfeiture funds from state court cases are divided. The prosecutor makes these decisions in federal court cases. Asset forfeiture funds are the cash and material proceeds that are surrendered when a drug investigation is taken to court, and these funds are used for law enforcement purposes throughout the city. We generally use these funds for one-time purchases that are not locally budgeted or funded. We do not use these funds for budgeting purposes because they are not permanent or static. They're dependent on the outcome of investigations, and they do tend to fluctuate. We currently have five officers assigned to our local drug task force, one of which is from the Village of Barbersville and four are from HPD. And the agreement that we worked out with the Village of Barbersville is that if the Barbersville officer is the lead investigator on a case, then they shall receive forty percent of any funds forfeited, forfeited, and we will receive sixty percent to the city of Huntington. If the HPD officer is the lead investigator on a case, then we will divide any proceeds eighty-twenty in our favor.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, sir.
How do you determine who's the lead investigator? If it's in the territory of Barbersville, they get it, or?
All, all the cases are actually here. They send an officer here, and he works on our task force, but they work cases in the city of Huntington. The cases are just generally assigned on a roundabout basis by the sergeant over the unit. And again, it just depends on who ends up picking up the case, but they're assigned as they come in.
But what happens if there's something going on in Barbersville? Do we ever respond to that?
Yeah, we have, that's, that's other elements of the MOU that cover mutual aid. We do provide assistance there if they need us with anything. Generally, though, the more, most common types of things we would be called for would be for help with forensics, things of that nature. We have a forensics and evidence unit, and obviously, we would help them with any drug investigations if they asked for it, but generally, they don't ask for that kind of help, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the chief? Councilwoman Mount, would you like to give your Public Safety Committee report?
Yes, the Public Safety Committee did meet. We moved forward to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. All right, we will move this on to a second reading for the next time that we meet. Item number six is a first reading of an ordinance twenty-twenty-oh-four-seven. Ms. Miller?
An ordinance of council temporarily, temporarily reducing the business and occupation tax rate on the retail sales category from point-two-five percent to point-zero percent by amending, modifying, and reenacting Article seven-eighty-seven-point-oh-nine of the codified ordinances of the, of Huntington, West Virginia to provide relief to restaurants and retail establishments.
Welcome back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair members. The title of this ordinance says it all, to provide relief to restaurants and retail establishments because of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. As I indicated to you previously, our retail environment, the retail stores that have opened here and restaurants are extremely special. A very special environment has been established in Huntington, and we have to do everything that is humanly possible to provide assistance to them and to help provide protection to them during this COVID-nineteen pandemic. We have, the previous council, on three separate occasions, on a quarterly basis, chose to authorize this ordinance to be able to help our restaurants and retail establishments. In April, in July, in October, the pandemic, as we all know, is in full rage, and our businesses continue to need assistance. That's why we're coming back to you now in, in January. The total fiscal note per quarter on reducing the point-two-five percent business and occupation tax for retail and establishments and restaurants is a total of five-hundred-thousand dollars per quarter. That's a, a loss of revenue during that time. Fortunately, because of some extremely hard decisions that we made four years ago, we're in a position to be able to help, and we must help. We're asking your assistance in moving forward with this one more quarter, and we will come back and have a discussion in April to determine whether the pandemic has started to relieve or if we need to continue on, and we'll have, we'll continue having this conversation. Be glad to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? All right, Councilman Shockley, do you have a finance committee report?
Yes, ma'am. Our Administration Finance Committee did meet and forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We'll hear this as a second reading when next we meet. Item seven is a first reading of an ordinance twenty-twenty-oh-four-eight. Ms. Miller?
An ordinance of council temporar, temporarily reducing refuse fee from twenty dollars per month to zero per month by amending, modifying, and reenacting Section nine-fifty-one-point-zero-eight of the codified ordinances of Huntington, West Virginia to provide relief to residents during the coronavirus outbreak.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Chair members, once again, as I stated in the previous ordinance, that the title actually says it all. The last line of this title for this ordinance, to provide relief to residents during the coronavirus outbreak. It just goes to make perfect sense. If we're going to help retail and restaurants, help our businesses, we're not worth our salt if we're not doing what we can to help our residents. What we found, again, as we were trying to determine how we could provide relief, we came to council in April of last year, and again in July, again in October, and each time, city council approved the reduction of the, the elimination of the refuse fee down to zero dollars during that quarter. This recommendation continues because although we have learned to live with it, problem is, some people aren't living with it, and it's affecting families, households in our community. Honestly, I wish we could do more. When I look at what is being, the revenue that's being lost in the previous ordinance, the revenue that is being for, forgiven in this ordinance, eight-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars, that's one-point-three million dollars per quarter. Five-point-two million dollars per year. As I indicated, we made some unbelievably hard decisions four years ago. Because we made those decisions and bared the brunt of them, we're able to do things that were previously unthinkable. And now, for those families that need the help, just twenty dollars a month, for some, that doesn't mean anything. For some, it means everything, and those are the individuals who we're doing this for. I get quite emotional as we're talking about this because these are our neighbors, our family, and this is the most direct way that every one of you, every one of us, as I mentioned earlier, Coach, every one of us are able to do, to be able to hold on to one another and help each other as community. Sermon's over with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, the Administration Finance Committee did meet and forwarded to full council a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Shockley. All right, we will hear this as a second reading when we next meet. Item eight is a resolution twenty-twenty-one-R-oh-four. Ms. Miller?
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Doron Jackson to the Huntington Municipal Development Authority.
Madam Chair, move to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
All right, that is, Councilman Bowen moves, and Councilman Shockley seconds. Any discussion on the motion? All right, um, Councilman Bowen, please speak to the item and relay the Personnel Committee report.
The Personnel Committee did meet with this and forward to the full council a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, was there any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, so this time, we will vote all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is approved with congratulations to our colleague, Councilman Jackson. Item nine is a resolution twenty-twenty-one-R-oh-five. Ms. Miller?
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Jennifer Wheeler to the Planning Commission of the City of Huntington.
Madam Chair, move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, and that's, Councilman Bowen moves, and Councilman Anderson seconds. Discussion on the motion? Councilman Bowen, your committee report?
Personnel Committee did meet on this, and we move forward with full, to full council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. All right, any questions on the item? Ms. Miller, was there any public comment received?
None received.
Thank you, so we will vote all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved with gratitude.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Item ten, another resolution twenty-twenty-R-ninety-two. Ms. Miller?
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to repair fire damage at the Huntington Police Department.
Welcome back, chief.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Chair.
We need, we need a motion, please.
Councilman Bailey, do you?
I would move for adoption, please.
I'll second.
All right, so Councilman Bailey moves to adopt. Councilman Shockley seconds. Discussion on the motion?
You can have him discuss it.
All right, Chief Cornwell, would you?
Ladies and gentlemen, the resolution twenty-twenty-dash-R-dash-nine-two is a resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for repaired fire damage at the Huntington Police Department. We suffered a fire at police headquarters on October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. It was started by a battery charger that malfunctioned on the second floor in our detective bureau. The EP Leach Construction Company was the winning bidder. Their quote was forty-nine-thousand-and-sixty-seven dollars, and that covers replacing ceiling tiles throughout the first floor, parts of the second floor, the bottom two feet of drywall in our property crimes bay, new carpet in our property crimes bay and family crimes bay, painting of walls, replacement of cove base, and cleaning of floors.
Excellent. Any questions for the chief?
Chief Cornwell, just from my memory, last time we met in Administration Finance, the EP Leach was the only one to spec the project fully correct.
That is correct. It was put out for bid. One, one vendor did not return a quote. The second bid was not up to specs. All the repairs that we had quoted in EP Leach was the only one that actually submitted a bid that covered all the repairs that were needed.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the Administration Finance Committee did meet and forward this to full council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Shockley. Ms. Miller, was there any public comment on this item?
None received.
All right, then we will vote all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item eleven is a resolution twenty-twenty-R-ninety-three, a resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to furnish labor and materials for demolition and site clearance for various structures within the city of Huntington.
Madam Chair, one, motion to adopt?
Second.
All right, and that's, Councilwoman Rumball moves, and Councilwoman Mount seconds. Welcome.
Thank you. This resolution will allow the demolition and site clearance of unsafe structures throughout the city of Huntington. We anticipate more than one-hundred buildings being demolished. The winning bidder is Danny Sullivan Escavating of Coal Grove. No Huntington-based company's bid on the project. The cost of the contract is not expected to exceed one-point-five million dollars and is for one year with an annual renewable option for up to three years. Funding will come from the General Fund, CDBG funds, and private donations. Crystal Perry, our demolition specialist, will give you more information.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Welcome back, Ms. Perry.
Good evening. I'm Crystal Perry, demolition specialist, planning and development. In two thousand and nineteen, you may recall that Mayor Williams announced that the city would demolish one-hundred structures in three hundred and sixty-five days, resulting in Project Bane, light nuisance elimination. Not only did we meet this challenge, but we exceeded. We demolished a hundred and four structures in three hundred and sixty-five days. Now, the mayor has challenged us once again. On October the twenty-sixth, he stood in the nine-hundred block of Twenty-seventh Street and announced that the city would be continuing its efforts with slum and block removal and pledged to demolish or remove all one-hundred-nineteen structures that had been ordered by the Unsafe Building Commission, not in three hundred and sixty-five days, but in eight months. This was every structure that was ordered at that time on the UBC list. This resulted in Bane two-point-oh. Now, this does not mean that on June thirtieth, every unsafe structure in the city will be demolished. This just means that we have successfully carved the list to a more manageable number, and the mayor covered that in the press conference. The list will ebb and flow. It will always go up and down. The list at that snapshot in time was a hundred and nineteen. To date, we have removed forty-three structures, and the list sits at one-hundred-and-ten today. One-hundred-nineteen minus forty-three does not equal one-hundred-and-ten, but as I said before, properties are added and taken off each month, and the list will go up and down. But this evening, I wanted to give you an update on our efforts with Bane two-point-oh. As of today, forty-three structures have been removed from the city's unsafe building list. Twenty-four of those structures have been demolished by the city. Twelve of those have been taken down by the owner, and seven of those have been rehabilitated and removed and are now considered productive properties again. Currently, we have an additional fifteen properties that are in queue for demolition and will be demolished over the next thirty days or sooner. Our current contractor has two crews working in the city, five to six days per week, to achieve the goal that the mayor set. It is important to note that the demolition process does not happen overnight. We have to check and double-check and check again everything that we do, the proper service, the asbestos surveys, and abatement if needed. Unfortunately, we are seeing a lot of asbestos show up in these properties, small amounts, but nevertheless, they have to be removed. This requires constant contact between myself, the abatement technician, and the contractor. We cannot simply abate the properties and let them sit, waiting for demolition. Proper steps must be taken to satisfy state, local, and federal guidelines. Structure priority is determined by the UBC and will go in the order in which they are ready. The UBC Commission is comprised of the building inspectors, Huntington Police Department, our city fire marshal, a community liaison, and a member of the Health Department. At our last two meetings on the agenda, we added over twenty properties per meeting. So as you can tell, we are working around the clock to see that these structures are going down in a safe and timely manner. After the meeting, we will provide you with a bookly from Mr. Shockley's request that outlines every property that's on the list, the status that they are in, and the properties that went down. And if I may, Mr. Bailey, that property is on the list, and it just needs debated.
Thank you very much.
So I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions.
I have a question. You mentioned that some houses can be put, or deemed a productive property. Once again, are there certain criteria, or how do we make sure that they are actually a productive property? How is that?
So when they come before the Unsafe Building Commission, there is a set of criteria that they have to follow. If a property owner states that they want to rehab this property, then the inspectors go out and they look at this property. They have to produce plans, and they have to complete the work in around six months. And so, all of these properties have been inspected, and they've been signed off on by our building inspectors.
I wanted to ask a question, I'm sorry. So is, is that something that we, as the city, do as far as putting them in a category where they, they may be able to be rehabilitated compared to ones that's just past the point of no return?
When the properties are ordered, that property owner is given that opportunity to come to these public meetings, and they have to present that at the meeting. We always want to give that property owner the ability to fix this property up, but we've seen in the past that sometimes that could go on for years, and so, we have perfected that, and the building inspectors really go after those properties, and they make those property owners stick to that deadline because we just can't let the property sit and maybe put a piece of siding on every year because that has happened in the past. So really, we're really strict about those guidelines now.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, point of inquiry. So on, the, the bid outlined the demolition costs if no asbestos is present. So approximately, what's the increase in cost when asbestos is present on a building?
The demolition cost for a house if no, if no asbestos is present is about five to seven. There is no way to estimate an asbestos cost. We could have asbestos that range from nine-hundred dollars to thirty thousand. We just debated a house in the West End that just the abatement was almost thirty thousand. So there's no way to estimate that, but we do get quotes for those as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Perry?
Thank you for all your hard work, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. We have a good team.
Madam?
Committee report?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the Administration Finance Committee did meet and forward this to full council with a favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you, Councilman Shockley. Is there, Ms. Miller, was there any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we will take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then this resolution is approved. And moving on to item twelve, a resolution twenty-twenty-one-R-oh-one. Ms. Miller?
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of Ursula Huntley to the Planning Commission of the City of Huntington.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
All right, so that is moved by Councilman Jackson and seconded by Councilwoman Mount. Councilman Jackson, would you like to speak to the resolution and deliver the report of the Personnel Committee?
Yes, Personnel Committee did meet and forward this to full council with a favorable, favorable recommendation.
Excellent. Any, any questions on the item? Ms. Miller, was there any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, we'll vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Item thirteen, good and well- Item 13, good and welfare. Ms. Miller, was there anything submitted besides this letter that I have in front of me from Ms. Holman?
Lisa, neither Lisa nor I received any emails or phone calls. No, ma'am.
Thank you. So this time, I will read into the record a letter that we have received from Stephanie Holman of 1424 Charleston Avenue, Huntington. All right, Ms. Holman writes, "I pray for our city, state, country, and the world that the love of God will flow from heart to heart. I ask that the heart of Mayor Williams continue to be open to the voice of God to manage our city with integrity for the good of the community. City employees will be helpful and considerate to the public. The city council will work together for the good of the people across political lines. My slash our city continues to be a beacon of hope and possibilities to other cities. Wisdom and knowledge be with our leaders to work in good unity for the community. Heavenly Father continues to bless Huntington with good business, Marshall University academically and sports-wise, St. Mary's, Cabell Huntington Hospital with innovative medical breakthroughs. Please keep the frontline workers and sanitation department safe. Help the people of Huntington to walk in love with one another. Draw us closer to your Father in Jesus' name. We love you. Amen. Stephanie Holman. P.S. Help people see the importance of wearing a mask." All right.
Amen.
So at this time, I will ask my friends on the right. Do you have anything for good and welfare? Anyone here?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
I do. Madam Chair, for me, this past week has been extremely exciting. I've, I've been checking my Facebook and Twitter religiously to catch up on all the latest tweets from our 31st head coach of Marshall University. So I want to congratulate Coach Huff for becoming our 31st coach at Marshall and all the excitement that he has brought to this program. And if you've watched any of his videos, posts, or anything of that nature, he's, he's already been an ambassador out in our community, meeting people, patronizing our local eateries, establishments. And, and he brings so much passion and charisma to his speaking. At 46, I thought about suiting up and trying to go back in. So that's what this man brings to the table. So just wanted to congratulate Coach Huff and look for great things to come from Marshall University, so.
Thank you, Councilman Shockley. Did either of you gentlemen in the back have anything for good and welfare? Councilman Jones?
I'd like to say that the kids got back to school this past week, and I was fortunate enough to get a long-term assignment. But that isn't what I want to address. I'm certainly glad to have them back. I hope it works out that we can get our children back to school and get at least that part of our lives back to normal.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Oh, Madam Chair.
All right, and anyone here? Councilman Bowen?
I've got two. The first one's rather quick, the second one's a little more drawn out. First thing, I want to thank everybody that's involved with being able to broadcast these meetings. I know for a lot of our citizens, that's, that's a really big thing to be able to feel that they're still connected. I promised my oldest son that I'd say hello, so hi, Austin. He, he gets a real big kick out of being able to watch these. Everything from the beginning of last January, he's tried to watch everything on Facebook he could and watch anybody that's in here. So that's, you know, he's 10. So if he's at home watching that, I can only imagine who else is, is getting to watch us, you know, do the city's work here. The second is regarding the motivation of one of the residents that live in Westmoreland. I spoke to her. She actually, she reached out to me. Her name's Stacy Nelson. She reached out to me at the end of November and was heartbroken over everything that's going on with COVID. She has been a long-term renter in our area. She actually, she moved to Wayne in 2009, but she's not had a permanent home since 2002. So she, she went through a lot of different relationship issues with her family. She's a single mother, really had a rough go of it. But she reached out to me last week to let me know that, that everything that she's done, you know, she was taking the Wayne Express, going from Wayne and East Lynn into the DHHR and taking classes there, and eventually transitioned up to MCTC to try to make herself better. But she always had a goal of wanting to live in Huntington. In 2017, she managed to find a house in Westmoreland. It was tucked away on one of the side streets. A friend of hers was leaving as a rental property, and she's since moved into it. But through the COVID process, the landlord has passed away. She was really scared as to what that was going to happen because, I mean, we all know a lot of times landlord passes away. Who's going to get the house? What are they going to do with it? Where's it going to go? And she actually, she reached out to me and said that the, the daughter of the landlord offered her first right of buy. So now she is blown away. She didn't want to jinx anything. She told me back in November, but she wasn't going to, didn't want me to, to share her story until now. But she reached out last week. She signed her paperwork. It's hers. Her and her little girl have a home, and she wrote this to me today. And she asked that I read it. She said, "Westmoreland to me means home. This is the neighborhood that I strived for, for the last 10 years. I knew what it was in 2010 that I wanted to live there. And while this area reminds me of the town I grew up in back home, there's truly no other place like Westmoreland. I sit on my porch and watch my daughter play with other children in the road." And she did want me to point out Mayor Williams, that they live over on Park Avenue. There's no traffic there. She said, but she knows that her kids, and she says her kids because all the kids in the neighborhood there. She said that she lives here knowing that her daughter will have a wonderful education. And it's here that she, as a single mother on a very limited income, was able to escape abuse and abandonment and bury, and buy her own home. In Westmoreland, we have Camden Corner, we have Piedmont Pantry, even Camden Park, to go whenever we just need a break from everything else. Westmoreland, as I'm sure everyone knows, has been a unique distinction of being in Huntington and Wayne County at the same time. And we're sometimes feel forgotten, but we are a vital, vital part of the Huntington community. And though many think we may be stagnant, I assure you, we're not. Given time and attention, we could be a booming area. And thanks to that, our little, our little big town will keep that small-town-help-your-neighbor mentality. So Mayor Williams, when you spoke earlier of what that $20 relief does, you know, for some, it's nothing. You know, for some, people don't even notice. But it's, but it's for people like Stacy Nelson, who, that $20 a month means the world. That's, that's a whole difference in what a single mom living in our city can really do with. So thank you from her.
Thank you, Councilman Bowen. And thank you, Austin, for watching us this evening. Anyone else, good and welfare? Councilman Sweeney?
Last week, I was contacted by a constituent, and his name is Mr. Shannon Harshberger. And he expressed to me, you know, his love for this town. He just wanted a little extra give back. So on his behalf, I want to present the city with his $100 check, and he wants it to go for a pothole repair.
Very generous. Thank you, Councilman Sweeney. All right, and so I, I would like to add that as we're, you know, navigating the pandemic and hoping to get back towards normalcy, I'd like to say thank you to our Cabell Huntington Health Department and their partners for working diligently to get vaccines out. Today, they rolled out a, a system of tracking people who are applying for the vaccine. As of today, anyone over the age of 18 can register for the vaccine. And there, they have a wonderful graphic on their website. So I encourage everyone to check that out and sign up online or call to be put in the queue for vaccines. Otherwise, I'd like to thank everyone for a very productive meeting, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We're adjourned. Thank you, Councilman.
I would love to have Coach Huff be on the.